Why don't we open the meeting? And we'll say it then. Six thirty, call a meeting to order. Number two, accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, can I make one amendment to the, um, agenda? I'd like to add item number...
Seventeen.
Um...
I think.
Why don't we say nineteen eight? Where it's just gonna be, uh, that we officially sign the documents in open meeting. So nineteen eight will be signature of whatever documents are...
Move the amended agenda.
Before we do, Kim, do we want to remove number seventeen also? How do you want to do that? That's the, uh, Mr. Sullivan, I believe it was?
I would leave that on and...
Till, until, okay, okay.
Move the amended agenda.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? It's unanimous. The next is a, uh, town employee recognition award item. And this is something that's been going on for probably, probably fifteen years. Uh, all of that, I think, maybe twenty years. And it's, in a very small way, uh, the way to show the town's appreciation to the town employees who have served us for five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years in some cases. A lot of times, the work of the town employees go unnoticed, unrecognized. But those of us who were involved up here, and the town administrator and, and others who see the results of the town employees' work on a day-to-day basis, recognize the, the amount of time and effort and dedication that goes into, uh, being an municipal employee in the town of Situate. Only yesterday morning, at six o'clock, people were down clearing the causeway of, of debris caused by the high tide. Things like that aren't seen by many people. But all of a sudden, they drove, drive over Bailey's Causeway, and it's clear. It wasn't clear at five thirty, it's clear at six o'clock. Things like that are just done, uh, on a daily basis, and we can't say how much we appreciate it. We, we really, really do. Sometimes town employees take a little bit of a knock of municipal employees for different reasons, and, and I can guarantee people right now, from what I've seen, it's not justified. They work hard, if not harder than, than many people in the public and the private sector. Having said all that, uh, what we're going to do tonight is ask the department heads to present awards to the people in their department in order to facilitate this a bit. And anyone who's not here, if the department heads would then make sure that they get their, uh, their recognition tomorrow or the next day, someday this week, in their own departments, if you could give that to them. Uh, the first one would be Chief Stewart. I don't know, Chief, if anyone's here?
I don't see anybody but...
Okay, maybe then you could pick up the awards from Kim tomorrow and present them to, to, uh, the officers involved.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Treasure collector's office. We have two going out today. We have one for Karen Crowell, who's been here five years. Jane will give her that award. Karen, thank you very much. And the next, to our treasure collector, Jane Lopato, who will be shortly leaving us to go to Cohasset, and we wish her nothing but good luck and... And there, thank you. Uh, Rick Judge is not here, I don't believe. Anyone from the fire? Those guys are working. Department of Public Works, Al Paula Barry, ten years.
Paula Barry.
Paula's here somewhere, I know. Paula, thank you.
She said it's been the best ten years of her life. Looking for thirty more.
Uh, Kevin Stanley, five years, in the public grounds. Kevin, thank you. And Tom Houghton, ten years. Tom, thank you.
Tom's been a few more years than Kevin, uh, and he's, he's been trading Kevin in all the tricks of the trade, so it's evident, uh...
He's a good man.
He is a good man.
Good teacher.
Yeah, he's a good teacher.
Thank you. And now probably one of the most recognizable people in town, Paul Gonzalez of the transfer station.
Kevin wants to say a few words. Congratulations, Paul. You did a fantastic job. Very good. Let's get the cleanest booth up there right there.
I think what, in the course of a week, well, in the course of a year, more people see Paul than they do anyone else in town, and they...
They're not only the face of the town, at least for, for five thousand members of the transfer station.
And he does a good job doing it, too. So, thank you all again. This is, this will probably be about a three-hour meeting. Before we go, a special award, and this is going to be for ten years, uh, to our own Kim Donovan. Is there, let me give Kim her award now. Kim, thank you. Kim, it's fifteen years, excuse me. Uh, did I miss anybody?
Five. Could you please tell us who the police officers and firefighters are?
Uh, yeah, read them out.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, the, uh, we'll start with the fire department. Five years, Craig Carter, Steve Goddard, and Robert McDonough. Ten years, Linda Berich and Thomas Siri. Fifteen years, Peter Downs and Thomas Huron. Twenty-five years, Richard Yannisik. And thirty years, Richard Handrehan. Thirty years, so that's... In the police department, you've got Gerald O'Brien, ten years. James Gil Martin, twenty years. Suzanne McDonough, twenty years. Thomas Hammacher, twenty-five years. Mary Rapald, twenty-five years. And Arthur Wood, twenty-five years.
Yeah, keep going, since we...
Sure. Um, we did the treasure collector, so the library, um, Sidney Peterson, five years, and Susan Pope, ten years.
Oh, Susan, Susan's here, I think I saw...
Oh. Let me say that more formally. Who's, who is here?
Susan Pope.
Susan Pope. Susan Pope has been here for ten years.
Thank you.
So, come on up.
Thank you for your ten years of wonderful service.
Oh, thank you.
So, I guess the sewer division is here, so if we want...
Yep.
Uh, Bob Rowman.
Yep.
So, uh, Bob, in the sewer division, we've got Chris Young. Is Chris here? Nope, okay. Then Arthur Johansson.
Arthur's not here.
Arthur's not here either.
Arthur's not here.
Five and ten years each. Um, we did the public grounds. The water division, Neil Mahoney, five years, and David Flaherty, fifteen years. Pass those out. And then, uh, in the highway division, um, Richard Fuller has been here for five years. Mike Breen will pass that along to him. And we got the, uh, transfer station already done, so that's it.
Thank you. And again, thank you all. I hope we didn't miss anybody. Doesn't appear we did. Uh, this meeting will probably go on for two or three hours. I don't imagine too many employees want to stay here for two or three hours. I wouldn't. Uh, so you, you're free to go, and thanks very much again. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good seeing you.
The next, next item, item on the agenda is a, uh, number five discussion...
Walk-in.
Of walk-in. Any walk-ins? Next item is walk-in? Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
Should I read the guidelines before we...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, why don't you read the guidelines? Why don't you come up and sit down?
Oh, I can do it.
Yeah, sure. Good.
Great.
As you're coming up, we'll read the guidelines.
Right, so, we have a, a form here that is the guidelines for the walk-in period, and I'll just read it, the, 'cause the clerk is, uh, absent today. The, uh, "The purpose of the walk-in period is an opportunity for the public to address town business. The walk-in period is for comments only, not questions and answers. Where appropriate, selectmen may respond directly, or the board chairman may direct the question, comment, or opinion to the appropriate person to respond. Each speaker during the walk-in period must state his or her name, address, and the subject he or she will be addressing. Each speaker during the walk-in period is limited to speak once, five minutes in length, which is enforced by the board chair. Any request of extension of this time limitation is at the sole discretion of the board chair. Comments must be addressed to the board, not the audience. Speakers must present their remarks in a civil and courteous manner, and refrain from personal comments or accusations. If in the opinion of the board chair, comments by a member of the public during the walk-in period are not related to town business, or in any way violates these guidelines, the board chair may no, will notify the speaker to either redirect his or her comments to town business. If the individual persists to violate these guidelines, he or she will be asked to stop speaking. If the speaker is advised again to stop speaking because he's violated these guidelines, the board chair may have the person removed from the meeting." And just to qualify this, the reason why, um, it cannot go beyond these, these levels is because it has to be posted so that, um, it's, per open meeting law, that there, everybody has an opportunity to discuss and is, is, um, informed of what the discussions will be. So we can't just all of a sudden bring up a topic that the whole public does not, um, is aware that's going to be on, and they can participate in the discussion. So that's why we follow these.
Thank you. Having said that...
Ooh, great talk.
Hate to make you the first person after that, but go ahead. If you name it, adjust it if you would.
My name is Ellen Bernardi, and I live at six sixteen Hathley Road. My first point, I think, is one of clarification, although I appreciate the rules of conduct. I'm wondering if, uh, this is the right mode, and you can tell me if it isn't. I would like to know who makes the, does, or clarify, for the use of Pier forty-four, will that decision be made by the selectmen?
Brother all.
It, it will be. And, having understand that, I would like to either be, uh, entered on the agenda, if, if that's the correct protocol. I would like to address the selectmen before a decision is made on the use of Pier forty-four. Because I have been doing some research, I have been in touch with the MBTA, and I have information that I think would benefit, um, the townspeople and the selectmen in, uh, knowing some of the criteria, or reviewing some of the criteria, and, um, determining the use. I think we have a plan that will benefit all people of the town and the criteria. So, that's...
Why don't you do this? My suggestion would be, put it together in a letter or memo, uh, to Kim Donovan. Send it to Kim, saying what it is, asking if it could be put on the agenda, future agenda, and we'll look at it and deal with it.
Uh, okay. Can I get an answer tonight, though, as to whether or not a decision on the use will, um, not be made until I, and I don't know if there are other people that would like to approach the selectmen, uh, until that time? So that a decision is, basically, so that a decision is not made before myself or other interested parties have an opportunity to address this board?
We have, we can probably just, uh, guarantee that, no decision. I'm sure you're gonna get your letter in within the next week or two.
Oh, yes.
So therefore, if your letter comes in, we'll deal with it. There'll be no decision made in that period of time. I just want to point out, I mean, we've had probably a year and a half or two years of, of discussions, meetings, uh, committees being formed, committees meeting, so there's been certainly ample time for people to give their input. Uh, if there's some new input that you want to put into this next, then we're more than welcome.
Well, judging from comments that I'm hearing from townspeople, I think there's still a fair amount of confusion and misunderstanding, and having spent, uh, time now, um, with MBTA, with the paperwork that has come through, I think it would, uh, behoove the, uh, selectmen and the townspeople to hear, and I am not opposed to a limited period of time, or whatever, to make a presentation, but I, I would like to do that.
That may be fine.
Okay. There are questions?
Thank you. It's not to have a lot of discussion, but go ahead. It's a walk-in, we don't want it back and forth.
I understand. But just one quick point. You know, the board is not gonna just write a letter to the town and say, "This is what we've decided. We're gonna have a big public discussion about..."
Okay.
"...our deliberations."
Fine. I don't understand.
This is not gonna be happening behind closed doors. This is gonna be a, an open discussion and an open meeting that's posted, like we were talking about earlier.
Makes me feel very good, thank you.
To your benefit is this. The, the meeting's gonna be, at some point in the future, it's gonna be in the news, and if need be, maybe we could ask that, uh, if you're gonna submit something, then maybe we can ask our assistant to, administrative assistant to notify you of the date of the meeting. So that you can come at that time to do a presentation, instead of maybe trying to do something separate apart. That will probably be a meeting to deal with.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, number five, vote one-day malt, uh, wine and malt beverage license for your charity at Hollis Street. Number five. How are you?
I'm not Father Bradley, as you can tell.
I know.
Father Bradley's in...
Dramatic training change, that's a good thing, maybe.
Father Bradley's in France right now, so...
Yes, so, you know...
Here in his stead.
Right. So I think, um, he's already sent the application in anyway for, um, beer and wine license for the foyer of charity, um, auction and garden party on the twenty-third. And so we are just here to find out whether or not we can pick it up for him. My name is Florence Ely, and I'm Fourth Avenue, by Fourth Avenue.
And I'm Anne Rollo, I'm on Manlot Road.
Thank you both.
Motion?
I think Tony just asked to make one. Go ahead, Tony.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to the foyer of charity at seventy-four Hollis Street for a garden party anniversary celebration and fundraiser on Saturday, June twenty-third, from five PM to eight PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second discussion, discussion from the floor.
Everyone, I'm sorry.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can pick that up from Kim, uh, in a couple of days, Kim?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you both.
And you're welcome to attend, if you'd like.
Thank you. Good luck.
Very much.
Uh, the next is, uh, one-day wine and malt beverage license, uh, Central Marine Center, Edward Foster Road, Mr. Twigg. He was going to be here, right?
Yes.
Why don't we hold off on it, uh, if I may suggest, till the end of the meeting and, and see if he, uh, shows up, or if we can do what we want. Uh, next, discussion of special permit, Knights of Columbus, uh, the annual carnival. Anyone here from the Knights? Mr. Limbaka.
I'm here annually.
Annual. And we're very happy about that, too.
Yeah. It's a lot of work, but a tremendous effort, and a tremendous benefit, I think. So, what we're looking for is, the dates are the seventh, sixteenth through the twenty-second. Operator, the operation, everything is identical to what it has been in the past. We're coming in on Monday, setting up Monday morning, operational Tuesday through Saturday, and do off Cole Parkway, probably ten o'clock on Sunday morning. Any questions?
Tony?
I assume you got the letter from the police chief?
I haven't seen it, no.
Um, he had some concerns about the number of officers that were gonna be on duty and, and how many we thought had to be involved in it.
Yeah, I talked to Brian Hallway, just before this meeting, and I'm, I'm satisfied that what he's suggesting will be, you know, will work, it's, 'cause it's pretty much consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I think there's a few changes, I think, between four and six officers, is I think is what he's suggesting, but I, I think contingent on his letter, if he's, if he's content with it, then I think...
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll comply with what he's looking for.
Or motion?
Motion?
Question, my clerk? Um, just, Bill, just something about the dates. The dates of our motion read, the special event permit is from the seventeenth to the twenty-first. You said sixteen to twenty-two. Later in the motion says setup will be sixteen. Do we need to add something about the twenty-second in there for you?
Yeah, if, if you make it from the, the sixteen through the twenty, the twenty-second, that covers, the whole time will be on Cole Parkway.
Twenty-second is breakdown day?
Yeah, we, actually, we break down on Saturday night. After we close, we start breaking it down, and the final, the final vehicles and that are off the, off Cole Parkway by ten o'clock, so...
Okay, so I'll just change that first twenty-first to twenty-second. And then the other question I had, may Mr. Chair, is, again, going through the permit application under, um, Harbor Master, it talks about additional security for Friday and Saturday night, for looking out for the docks and the floats. Um, and there's a, there's a, um, comment about the funding of that last year versus this year, and I didn't know. Trish, has there been any follow-up on that?
Well, with the board's approval, what Kim will do when she writes up the approval is, all these notes go as part of the, the approval. So the chief's comments, as well as the harbor master's.
Right, okay.
Well, what we've done in the past is, is on, on the nights with the fireworks, is to come back up and, and pay if they have an extra person on, and we pay for that person.
Yeah, that's great. Perfect.
That way there protects the people, people from going down on the docks.
Oh, no, yeah.
Safety there, as well as personal property.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and, and obviously, I'm a supporter. I'm just going through, reading what the department heads have said. Motion?
Please.
Uh, move the board of selectmen vote to grant the special event permit for the Knights of Columbus annual carnival from July seventeen to July twenty-two, twenty-twelve, from seven to eleven PM, in accordance with all conditions set forth by town departments and the town administrator. Carnival setup day will be Monday, July sixteenth, twenty-twelve. Selectmen also grant the Knights of Columbus use of Cole Parkway for this event.
Second.
Uh, discussion, from the floor, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Good luck.
Thank you, Trish.
Uh, item number seven, at the request of the applicant, Gil Sullivan, he's asked that this be postponed till the nineteenth. So with the board's permission, we'll take a motion to postpone this to the nineteenth.
Move to postpone. Um, item at seven, uh, agenda item seven to, to June nineteenth. Second?
Item consecutive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Judge?
Yes?
Just a question?
Yep.
And I'm kinda glad that this was postponed, because we didn't want to make it particular to this application. But we always say that, um, you know, immediate neighbors must be notified. How is that ensured that that actually happens? Because last year, I had some neighbors about a, one of these things, say, "Hey, I never heard about this." And I went back and looked. The person had said they had, they had notified. It's not our responsibility, but, yeah, how do we, how do we do it, you know?
It's been done on the honor system.
Okay.
And certainly, um, the police department will hear about it, from those neighbors, um, you know, there's no real penalty, obviously, unless we would not consider any future requests. But, um, it has been done on the honor system.
Great, thanks.
Uh, next, the discussion of the Gulf of Maine award. Samantha Woods, Jim DeBarris, if you'd come up, thank you. Thank you, and welcome.
How are you?
Yes, how are you?
Hello, welcome. Thank you for...
You're welcome.
...having us. Samantha Woods, executive director for the North and South Rivers Watershed Association.
Supervisor of the Situate Water Department.
Um, well, here, I think we are here to give you some good news tonight. It must be awards night, huh? You guys, huh? As you know, the town of Situate has been working with the North and South Rivers Watershed Association, um, as well as many governmental agencies to restore more natural stream flow and herring to the first herring brook, while at the same time ensuring that your community's water supply is safe and meeting the needs of the community. Recently, we have hit a milestone in that effort. This past spring, after implementing an operational plan for the first time to release water over the fish ladders and the dams at both the reservoir and the Old Oak and Bucket Pond, we're pleased to tell you that our volunteers have documented a limited return of herring, uh, for the first time, uh, in documented, you know, in decades, probably, uh, within two, into the Old Oak and Bucket Pond. There's still work to do, um, to restore the population, obviously. We need to improve the fish ladders at both the reservoir and Old Oak and Bucket Pond, and continue to seek out ways to, uh, conserve water, to ensure adequate water is available for the outmigration period in the fall. However, this return is proof of concept, that it may be possible to restore a population at this site, and we're very pleased about that. And as part of this effort, uh, the town of Situate's Water Department was nominated by our staff person, Sarah Grady, who works in our offices under the Massachusetts Bay Program, uh, to the Gulf of Maine Council Sustainable Communities Award, and you were chosen. Your community was chosen as the only community within the Gulf of Maine region, which includes Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Maine, and the Atlantic provinces of Canada, New Brunswick and Nova Scotia, so it's an international award. Sarah will be attending the award ceremony tomorrow night. Since Jim couldn't make it, he has to make sure you guys have water. Uh, and she'll be bringing the plaque back here to present it to the Water Department for the efforts. She'll be back on Friday.
That's great.
Um, I just want to thank Jim in particular, and Al Bangert, and of course, you all as the Water, um, Board for the town for your cooperation in these efforts, and, um, let's hope we can continue to work well together and bring back the little fishies, so... Jim, do you have anything you want to say?
I just appreciate the water commissioner standing beside us and, uh, working with us on, you know, straightening up.
Comments from the board? Thank you both.
Phenomenal. I, I heard the email, or, I've heard the email, listen to me. I, I read the email earlier, and I was like, fab, I'm just excited about it. Um, the question I have is, you mentioned if there is, if there are herring going back into, like, Old Oak and Bucket.
Mm-hmm.
I know people are fishing there. Is there gonna be maybe some restrictions that we gotta, we may need to consider if, if it continues to prevent...
Yeah.
...fish stocks from getting depleted?
Well, right now, uh, herring, the taking of herring is banned on the coast of Massachusetts, and so, uh, there's a sign right there at the fish ladder that says there's no, no taking of herring. So, um, I think most fishermen know that, um, and are pretty respectful of it, because most people who fish realize that these little herring are the very base of the food chain that, that, you know, the big fish are coming in for, so...
Right.
...they don't want to take their bait.
But, I could also just chime in, in addition to being important as fish, you know, as we've often commented, but just for people wa, watching, um, it's an indicator of the health of our whole water, of our water system, because the fish aren't there, the water's not good. And, uh, that's why this has been supported also by the DEP and part of our water withdrawal permit and all this sort of stuff, because it's a very good example of the quality of the water. And then just, uh, at a larger scale, we also hear a lot of things about the plight of commercial fishing and declining saltwater fish stocks. And there are a lot of studies out there that clearly show that herring being the base of the food chain out there as well, uh, the decline of herring over the last thirty, forty years may or may not have been also contributing to declining fish stocks, so, you know, every ten to foothold we can make for the, for the herring on the freshwater aspect of their life cycle also contributes to, potentially contributes to the health of the commercial saltwater fleets over years. So hopefully, we can keep this moving forward for tens of years forward, so we are helping both freshwater and saltwater side, and the work you folks have been doing with Rosen's Water Resources Committee, and Al, and, uh, Jim, and everybody is really gonna have a large impact across the spectrum. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, again, thank you. I think Rick just mentioned the, the work of our water department and how intricate that is to this whole program. But a special thanks to Samantha from the board, from the South River Watershed Association. We've become good partners, and, and we, we want to continue that partnership. You certainly are a great benefit to us, and I hope, uh, we'll be able to benefit You certainly are a great benefit to us, and I hope we'll be able to benefit to you towards our common goal, and that's to make the waters surrounding Situate and the coast better. So thank you both. Thanks for coming in. We're thrilled that Jim could, when you do get that award, bring it up here, maybe we could take a look at it and get it back to you.
We will.
It's something we're really proud of, and thank you.
Should be.
Thank you for nominating us, too.
Thank you guys, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, is there a contract to be awarded?
No, it works for this one. It's just a simple contract for Blossom Street. As part of the street acceptance program, there were going to be some improvements made to Blossom Street, which would be covered under a betterment to the residents, as I said, part of the street acceptance. We put it out to bid, and this is what we came up with, TL Edwards, for $36,740.
Okay, discussion from the board?
Just quickly, Kevin, what do we estimate this would be?
We were right around $34,500 or something like that. We were in the range. It was pretty close.
And this is funded through the same mechanism that we've done the last ones, where we front the money?
We established that fund at the last town meeting, so it comes in.
And the betterments will come in and fund it. Great.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move the board of selectmen vote to award the contract for the roadway improvement for Blossom Street, contract number 12-SA-07, to TL Edwards, Inc. of Avon, Massachusetts, for a total bid price of $36,740, with payment to be made at the unit prices and/or lump sum prices pending receipt of a certificate of insurance, 100% performance and 100% labor and materials bond.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
The next is a paving contract. Al?
That's being postponed.
That's being postponed. Makes it even easier. Thank you. Before we go on to discuss item number 10, Mr. Twig is here, and maybe you could come up and we'll deal with number five. That's the one-day wine and malt beverage license to Situate Marine Center. Mr. Twig, welcome again. How are you?
Fine. Good evening, board of selectmen.
Again, if you just identify yourself in?
Dan Twig, 22 Collier Road, Situate. I'm going to be having an art opening at the Situate Marine Center on this Thursday from 5 until 8:00, and we're looking for a license for, to give complimentary beer and wine.
Discussion from the board?
I assume you've talked to the people running the Maritime Center?
I have.
And it's all on board with that?
Yes.
Motion?
Motion? Good? Anybody?
Move that the board of selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to Daniel Twig for an art opening to be held on Thursday, June 7, 2012, at the Situate Maritime Center at 119 Edward Foster Road, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., pending receipt of a liability insurance certificate to be supplied by the applicant.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Just an aside, and I know this is probably impossible to reach everybody, but in the future, if it's possible to give the town administrator system enough leeway on these one-day liquor licenses, it makes it a lot easier for her and for us also. Sometimes it's not possible, it comes up, it has to be done immediately, but it means amending the agenda, et cetera, and it's additional work. But this is fine. And, thank you. Next.
10.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. 10. This is a discussion vote hunting on town of Situate conservation land. It's been requested by citizens that, in view of the recent purchases over the past four or five years of a large amount of conservation land over in especially the West End, that it may be time to take a look at the land use in that area. I don't know if anybody from the audience wants to speak to it. Karen? Karen Connolly will come up and speak to it.
Karen Connolly, 30 Ron Tree Lane. I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. As anyone who watched town meeting knows, I'm interested in the fact that there's currently on the books a bylaw that allows hunting and shooting in the West End of Situate. I don't know how long that bylaw's been on the books. It's very brief, and it just refers to hunting and discharge of firearms. We now own over 330 acres of land in the West End, and that land is currently available for hunting and shooting. I think at the very least, the Conservation Commission needs to look at what the best use of that land is, that rules and regulations need to be put in place, that there needs to be communication with the public in terms of, you know, what is allowed or not allowed out there. I know you also put on the agenda the bylaw review. I do think we should look at the bylaw and see if that needs to be amended. I guess my question would be, in the interim, if the bylaw, if we do a bylaw review and make the by, change the bylaw, when would we have to vote on that? Could we do it at special town meeting, or would it have to be done in April?
I, that would depend upon the bylaw review committee and how fast they work on it. I would think that a town administrator, that if they worked on it and they got a report back to us, it could be done in the fall.
Yes, if they recommend changes.
You change bylaws at a special?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the earliest would be the fall.
Right.
If there is one.
Because I will tell you that I've been through all the applications on all the land purchases in the West End, and I saw no reference at all to hunting and shooting on those properties. And it's just kind of a quirk that this bylaw exists that allows that to happen. And so I would just say that, I think that if the town meeting had known that hunting and shooting was allowed out there, I'm not quite sure people would have looked at the land purchases quite the same way, which is why I made such a fuss at the meeting. So, I thank you for doing this, and I appreciate the action that you're taking.
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, and the bylaw is, it seems pretty old. It's a little bit vague where it says
Right.
Hunting's not allowed to the east side of 3A.
Correct. With the exceptions of the marshes up in Minnetonka
And the glades.
And the glades.
And on Herring Brook.
And on the North River.
Right. And obviously, the town follows the Massachusetts general law in terms of what you can fire and how close
Correct.
You can be to homes and stuff like that. But obviously, it's very prudent to do that.
Well, I don't know if, yeah.
The time period, you know, as you mentioned, even if they got something figured out in the next couple of weeks, still, there's not going to be a special town meeting for months. So I think one of your points you've brought up in the past is there should be signage out there so that people who are going out to enjoy the passive recreation on this property that we've purchased at least know what they're getting into and wear proper attire and, you know, and don't accidentally get, you know, get injured out there.
Right, because as it stands right now, I don't, I've actually been through all of the regulations about hunting, and you can actually hunt for crows, starting in July through next, I think it's April.
So we actually can eat crows?
And I don't really like crows, but, you know, I think I'd be a little shocked if I walked out in that land and ran into someone who was shooting crows. But you can. It's legal.
Personally, I find them a little stringy.
So, you know, and I just, I, like I said, I think this was unintentional, that this bylaw existed, and to be honest with you, when I went through the bylaws and saw four or five pages worth of bylaws related to dogs, and one, you know, short sentence related to hunting and shooting. And I make the distinction between hunting and shooting because shooting, I think you can just go out and shoot a target if you want, and that's not clear to me either. So, but if you're hunting, that's different. That is very regulated. But again, I wasn't aware of the fact that you could shoot crows for like, seven months, so.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, Karen, this is great that you brought this up, and everybody else I know, several other selectmen, and this is really good. Obviously, we're not making a decision on this tonight.
Right.
We're not going to have a huge discussion tonight.
Right.
You know, we've referred this essentially to the Conservation Commission. I see members of the CONCOM out there, and we have a note in here from Trish, our town administrator, about CONCOM's expressed interest in sponsoring a workshop or two to get town input and all this sort of thing, and you'll obviously be involved in that. Overall, I think this is just a good example of how we need to manage change.
Right.
You know, I mean, a lot of people say, oh, we don't want any change going on. Well, change is happening. We're buying these lands, which is all good stuff. Hunting, that's also good stuff. We got to make sure we manage so this can all work together. And so I really applaud you for bringing this to everybody's attention. And it's going to be a process. I think it's also very good to have as a, pun intended, a target of the special town meeting to have a bylaw change, if that's what needs to be. But let's expedite this. It's not going to happen in a week, but also, let's not have this stretch on for years and years and years. This should be a relatively straightforward thing. For you members of the CONCOM out there, you know, thanks for picking this up and running with it, and helping get community feedback and doing due diligence on those lands.
Well, I especially want to point out that I did vote in favor on the advisory committee of building parking lots, so people can have access. So I'm not against people having access. I just want to be sure everyone knows what the rules of the road are, and that we are clear about what they are. And, you know, if you go on the Trustees of Reservation website, you can see that they've got very clear, you know, information about what is and isn't allowed on their properties. So, you know, I think this is all just kind of, all of a sudden, come together, and my hope is that we're going to be as good at managing the, you know, the conservation land that we have as we are managing our beaches and our harbor.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Thank you. Further from the board?
Just one last comment. Al, is it possible to get some signs up there in the interim so that people are just aware that hunting is allowed in that area?
I'll talk to the Conservation Commission about having to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, to that point, my question would be, can the Conservation Commission take some interim steps? For example, just impose a moratorium until the decision is made about what will and will not be allowed?
That, I don't, my suspicion is, I don't think I can do that. I don't think that can be done just by the Conservation Commission, because that would require one committee deciding on a town-applicable bylaw.
Well, I think they can do things that are more restricted than the bylaw.
Well, they're going to get together and discuss it.
That may be a question for the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Rather than us discussing here, because we really can't give you an answer.
All right.
So, we're going to pass this on, if it's voted here tonight, to the Conservation Commission in another motion to pass on to the bylaw review.
Right.
At that time, the Conservation Commission can make their determination whether they want to. They're going to have public meetings, I think as Mr. Murray said, and that's where this can be really vented.
Great.
One way or the other. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the board of selectmen request an opinion from the Conservation Commission regarding hunting as it relates to writing new conservation restrictions and/or reviewing existing restrictions.
Second.
Before we take a vote, I saw, any discussion from the audience? Gentlemen in the back, if you could identify yourself, please.
Ernie Foster on 109 Clapp Road. I know the Massachusetts Fisheries and Wildlife would be more than happy to help with signage and any other type of understanding of rules and regulations for our setbacks and things like that. They're very helpful in that manner, and you have the commissioner that lives in Ingham, who's very familiar with this area and all the conservation land, so I think that'd be a great resource to look into.
Thank you. Thank you. Al took note of that, I'm sure, so if there is some need for advice on signage, we'll get that. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Motion?
Second on the bylaw review, if you would.
Move the board of selectmen request that the bylaw review committee review general bylaw number 30100, public safety, section 3100 firearms, and make recommendations on any revisions, edits, or changes that may be necessitated.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Before we vote on it, I know there are people here very interested in this. When the appropriate meeting comes up, whether it be conservation or bylaw review, and you have feelings one way or the other on this issue, that is the place to go in to express those feelings and have some effect on what the result will be. So I encourage you to go to the bylaw review meetings, notify them that you'd like to be notified when they do have their meetings, if that's possible, and just keep on top of this issue, because that's where it's really going to be talked about and decided. So, having said that, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Item number 11, insurance. Trish?
There's a memo from me to the board in your packet. We went out to bid for our FY13 and beyond general liability and related coverages. This is including police and fire accident. This is the major insurance package umbrella, public officials, school board liability for the town. As you will see, we had a few bids this year, and we had increased the budget due to a variety of circumstances, most of which was some losses, i.e. the storm we had in December 2010, but also, I think it's no surprise to anybody that the insurance market rates have increased for not only municipalities, but other people who require insurance. That being said, we had very favorable responses to the bids. We're well within the appropriation. We will, for the second time since we've bid the general liability insurance, have a surplus that will be available for other purposes. So if you don't have any other questions, I believe Kim gave you one amended motion for the police and fire, and another, and then the motion that you have in the packet. I'm very excited about the new general liability insurance carrier. It's with the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association in terms of the services that we will now receive and the regular inspection reviews. And once again, very happy we'll have a facilities manager to handle all the recommendations about our public buildings and properties that will be coming through, and I'll make sure the board sees a copy of those. I think it will be very helpful as we move forward with the public facilities plan as well.
Thank you. The board?
I just have a question, if I may. I'm very impressed by this, and on page two of your summary here, you talked about, essentially, that being said, almost $100,000 can be made available as a surplus for FY13. So that's essentially saying that, if I'm reading this right, we're saving $100,000 by doing this action because of prior costs were so much more, and this is less expensive. Is that correct?
Well, the bids came in well, and we did the appropriation, because I was concerned and had talked to, as you know, Mark Sandum's an insurance person, and talked to folks at the MMA conference. So the bids came in lower than we budgeted, you know, expected that it will be.
Yep. That's a great example of additional savings. It's $100,000 right there.
And this happened two years ago when we did it, and we were able to reappropriate that money at the special town meeting, $75,000 to the school, $25,000 to the town.
Yeah.
And it's an example where the MMA really comes in to play. You know, that we go to the conference and we do that sort of stuff, but these are the types of consortiums and stuff that we're able to take advantage of because we're part of the MMA, so, good job.
I think it's just, also, unfortunately, I have to follow up with what Tony or Rick said, is, when we save $100,000, whether it be $100,000 there or $300,000 there, as we save money as we go along, this is money that can be used to improve town services and also to retain town employees. I mean, towns all around us are being forced to lay off employees that, a great deal of suffering by the employees, and we do everything we possibly can to avoid that. I was thinking the other day that we, as far as my memory is concerned, I don't think we've found it necessary because of good financial management to lay off an employee in over 25 years, because the proposition, two and a half, with many towns were laying off employees left and right. We were able to keep town employees at the same level, and I think that's a credit to the town. And this is the way we do it. By saving $100,000 here, $200,000 there, and it pays off, so.
Good financial management.
Yep.
Motion?
Please.
So there's going to be three of them. The first one is move the board of selectmen award its property insurance, including public employees blanket bond, crime insurance, boiler and machinery, commercial general liability insurance, including ambulance, EMT professional liability, automobile insurance, public officials liability insurance, police professional liability insurance, excess liability insurance, school board liability insurance, to the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association for a bid price of $286,504 for fiscal year 13.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Tony?
Aye, yes. The second one is move the board of selectmen award its marina liability protection and indemnity coverage to CNA Insurance Company through MIIA for a bid price of $16,300 for fiscal year 13.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one is move the Board of Selectmen award its fire and police accident coverage to the Hartford Insurance Company through-
That's the wrong one.
Excuse me?
It's the amended one that Kim gave you.
I think that's the one I'm reading.
All right. It should be VFIS, Tony. I'm sorry.
Instead of Hartford?
Right, and the amount is correct. The amended amount she gave you. It's VFIS.
V S?
F is in franc.
I S?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll read that again.
Sorry.
Move the Board of Selectmen select to award its fire and police accident coverage to VFIS Insurance Company through Mitra's Insurance Agency for a bid price of $72,775 for fiscal year 13.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Next, item number 12, add addendum to the Ellis Estate License Agreement. Tricia?
Yes, a memo in the packet that I provided to the board talks about the CPC funds that the Arts Association was able to obtain for the Ellis Estate and the difficulty that they have actually being the applicant because the town indeed owns that building. And so they came to us and asked how they could be the applicant when in fact they don't own the property. And I contacted Town Council. He provided a mechanism by which we could amend their existing license agreement by an addendum, which you see attached, that will enable the town to sort of in local parentees and allow them to apply for grants on our behalf. Selectman Denehy, I know, has been very involved in this. John, I don't know if you had anything else that you wanted to add.
No, you've captured it.
Okay. So, the board would therefore have a motion to approve this addendum to the license agreement to essentially allow them to apply for grants. There was a concern on the part of the Arts Association that the improvements that they would be making to the building as a result of these grants and other fundraising that they do would be recognized, and the town wouldn't just, if the relationship ever severed, would be responsible for. So, what Town Council proposes contemplates that as well, and that's included in the addendum.
Tony?
Just one quick question, Tricia. When you started out the conversation, you mentioned CPC funds.
Mm-hmm.
Now, those wouldn't be reimbursable. This is only grants that they get outside of
Right, right.
the town.
Right. CPC gave them some money, and then they want to supplement those funds with other grant opportunities to do even more work at the estate.
Great. Why don't I take a quick second? It's only a paragraph here. I'll just read the amendment so people can understand what it is.
I didn't see you come in. I'm sorry. Janet's here, in case.
Hi.
I'm sorry, Janet. I didn't see you come in.
Why don't you come up and just say hello?
Aye.
What I think most of the explanation has been given, but-
Janet Cronacio, the president of Situate Arts. I live on Pheasant Hill Drive in Situate.
Just in consideration of the Situate Arts Association acting as the agent for the town in applying for grants to enhance the Ellis Estate, the Situate Board of Selectmen agrees that in the event of a license is terminated by the town, the town will reimburse the association for any improvements made to the premises through grants achieved by the association, provided that the town administrator is notified and the grant prior approval of the improvements. The cost of the improvements is documented at the time they're made. Reimbursement shall be made for the cost of the depreciated rate of 10% per year, and reimbursement shall be subject to the appropriations of necessary funds. So, and again, this is for grants that the association goes out above and beyond what the town gives, gives them through CPC or whatever.
Okay, the other question I guess I would have is, our license agreement, is it self-renewing at this point, or is that something we need to consider, too?
There's a term in the license agreement.
Okay, so we need to still resolve a long-term kind of situation, or reapply every?
I think, yeah, I think there is, I-
The license agreement-
As I looked at, there is a self-renewing mechanism involved in that.
Okay, so we need to work on confirming that as well.
Just periodically, what do you call it, calendar it and say, okay, take a look at it, renew it. But I mean, I think there is a mechanism in there.
Okay, because I basically, that's the other half of that, so that we know that the effort we're doing isn't going to get someone else coming in and say, we'd like to. So, as long as we're doing our job, you'll do your job.
Yeah, I don't think, town will do that. They won't do that.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Just, there is, we have a copy of the lease right here, and it does outline this, that it's basically, the current license goes till July 1, 2013, notwithstanding anything set forth herein. You can terminate whatever, but if no termination notice has been given, the term may be extended on a two-year basis, so long as the party, so extending delivers written notification of each extension to the other party, so.
Who would be the one notifying, just so?
You would be notifying us.
Okay.
In other words, it's to your benefit to keep renewing it.
Okay.
So, July 1, 2013, so 30 days prior to that.
We would notify you that we intend to stay.
Right, so June 1.
That's the latest. You could probably do it next January. You could probably do it now and say, we're going to renew it.
Yeah.
And just to clear it up.
Yeah, we are going to renew it. You can put it on the record right now.
Put it in writing.
You need something written, okay.
Thank you.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the addendum to the license agreement between the Situate Arts Association, the Town of Situate, allowing it to act as the town's agent in applying for and administering grants to enhance the Ellis Estate, provided that the town will reimburse the association for any improvements made to the premises through said grants received by the association, with the provisions and exceptions noted in the addendum.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
You need to execute it so you'll get a signatory on it.
Number 14?
13.
13, sewer betterment deferral.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant sewer betterment deferral number 12-1.
Second.
Discussion? Tony?
Just a quick discussion. This deferral, written through it, it's fine with me, but just to clarify, the deferral isn't a, and John, you may know, this just, it just passes it on.
What happens is, is that the applicant has applied saying they've met certain criteria for deferring it, but they're going to end up paying it. So, when the house is sold, they're going to be paying not only the amount that's owed under the betterment, but they're also going to be paying it in interest rate. So, the town is collecting its money at some point. Due to their financial situation, they're unable to pay it, and so they've asked us to defer it, and that's what we're doing.
And it's an elderment.
And we're not describing who the person is due to the privacy, so that's the reason why we're not getting into full details on it.
Right.
Did we get a motion on that?
Yep.
Do we get a second?
Yep.
We did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resignation of the treasurer-collector. Tony, if you would read the memo from Jane Lopardo.
Sure.
Thank you.
After much thought and great consideration, I regret to inform you that I'll be resigning from my position as treasurer-collector of the Town of Situate. This is a difficult decision for me, one I did not make lightly. I expect my last day of work to be June 26, 2012, in order to complete some annual tasks prior to my departure. It has been most rewarding experience to facilitate many changes that I have implemented over the past five and a half years of my employment. I have been fortunate to have extreme pleasure of working with many dedicated employees, boards, and committees since 2006, most notably the staff of the treasurer-collector's office, and of course, the Board of Selectmen. People welcome me upon my arrival and continue to collaborate with me in my ongoing endeavors to improve the town's procedural matters as it relates to financial position. As you know, I've accepted a treasurer position in neighboring town, a smaller town of Cohasset. There's significant change there. I look forward to the new assignment, miss Situate's employees and the wonderful residents I've encountered over the years. Last but not least, I want to thank having the opportunity to be part of a very special Town Hall family.
And the board gives both thanks and congratulations and wishes for success to Jane as she moves on to Cohasset, and we wish her nothing but the best. She serves the Town of Situate very well, and we appreciate that very much.
Motion?
Motion.
It's with regret that I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Jane Lopardo, treasurer-collector, and further that the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen thank her for her service to the Town of Situate.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, the assignment of committee commissioners, board and council liaison positions by the Board of Selectmen. As we know, the Board of Selectmen not only serve, Board of Selectmen will also liaison to most, if not all, committees in the Town of Situate. To the board, we have a list in front of us of the committees and the assignments of last year. Why don't I just go down them? If you're happy with your assignment, then so be it.
I was going to move, since Sean's not here, that he take half of them. And then split up the remaining half, Mr. Chairman.
You want to limit it to half? He's got a lot of duties as clerk now. I'm not sure he can handle, but it's not a bad idea. Advisory Committee, I'll continue doing that. No one has a problem. Animal Control Board is Sean. He will continue doing that. Beautification, myself, I'll do that. Border Health is Sean. I know he likes that. Bylaw Review Commission, Mr. Denehy.
Sure, I like that still.
Mr. Murray, Cable Television Advisory Committee.
Certainly.
Tony, Capital Planning.
Sure.
Commission on Disabilities, Mr. Denehy.
Please, yep.
Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Murray.
Sure.
Conservation, Mr. Murray.
Sure.
Counsel on Aging, Mr. Denehy.
Yes.
Economic Development Committee, the new committee, we haven't had a liaison to it. Accepting Volunteers, Sean.
I'd be glad to do that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray. Financial Forecast, Tony.
Sure.
Thank you. Historic, John.
Yes.
Housing Authority, I'll continue to do that. Planning Board, Mr. Denehy.
Please.
Plymouth County Advisory Board, I'll do that. Public Buildings, Sean.
Sure.
Recreation Commission, Sean. Yes. Renewable Energy Committee, Paul Reedy. Paul, Paul will accept that. Would love to have him. He's done a great job. It was obvious by the plot us were getting, not only from local officials, but by officials as high as the governor's office, who are recognizing the Town of Situate efforts in this area. School Committee, Vignani and Harris.
Sure.
Situate Chairman Connors, Mr. Murray.
Sure.
Social Coalition, Mr. Murray.
Sure.
Creed Acceptance Committee, I think that goes to the chairman.
Mm-hmm.
A virtual chairmanship. Town Web Page, Tony.
Sure.
Traffic Rules and Regulations, Norton, Murray.
Sure, I think we can continue our strong partnership there.
I think we probably can. Water Resources, Mr. Murray.
Certainly.
Waterways, Mr. Murray.
Yep.
Attorney Board of Appeals, Mr. Denny.
Yes.
I believe our work has done on those. Thank you all for renewing your interest in those committees.
Sean actually does want to change on some things, you know, I'd be glad to talk to him about some of these stuff.
I think Sean would appreciate taking more on. He's always looking for more to do. The next is Acceptance of the Gift. Joe, Joe Kelly, Veterans Counsel, if you could come up, Joe, and give us some information on that.
I didn't realize that you started at 6:30. I was going to try to sneak in on a walk-in, but anyways, what I'd like to do while I'm here is give you a little bit of an update in what Veterans Advisory Council has accomplished in its last three months or so, being active. Number one, we did get that-
You have to be just a little careful, and that's really on the agenda, Joe.
Okay, well, what do you want to address?
Sneak it in if you'd like somehow, but we'd like to talk about the gift and how that ties in with the great work the Veterans Council's been doing for the past-
All right. We petitioned the Military Friends Foundation for a $1,000 grant, and that grant is going to be used for outreach programs to the veterans in Situate. The $1,000 has been deposited into the general account under a restricted line, I believe it's called. So, we haven't used any of the monies yet, and there are some things happening in the very, very near future. We may need the monies for it.
That's great. I want to, I imagine, I'm pretty sure that that grant was given due to the work of the Veterans Advisory Council, and could you just fill us in on that?
Well, I have a very strong personal connection to the foundation myself. I have personally done some work with the foundation, with the Tax Line 32E, and, you know, promoting that, additional monies going into the foundation. Again, that foundation is dedicated to Massachusetts veterans from National Guard, Reservists, and air people. They're extending that to the Baller Act that was just passed last week at the State House, where it will be extended to all veterans in Situate and its families and Gold Star families.
Thank you. I just want to mention, while I have it here, last Thursday, the Military Friends Foundation honored State Treasurer Steve Grossman and State Senator Mike Rush, along with the family of Sergeant Michael Kelly in Situate, and that is Joe and his family, and they were honored in Boston at the Parkman House at an affair last Thursday, the 31st, and we'd like to, first of all, make note of that. Congratulations, Joe, and thank you for all you continue to do, and I'm glad these people recognize you. We've known it for a while, but it's nice to get some statewide recognition.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that.
Thanks, thanks.
And thank you for getting that award of $1,000. We can certainly use that in Veterans Security.
So, we sent them a thank you note on behalf of the council, and we also received some monies, actually gift cards, from the Food Pantry, Situate Food Pantry, which I petitioned the Clergy Association, which actually oversees the Food Pantry, and they presented Dawn with $385 worth of food stamps, not food stamps, but gift cards to the Stop and Shop, to be used at his discretion for veterans that need help immediately, and that will be replenished on a regular basis as needed.
Right.
But we were using the money from Hingham, by the way. We're getting, yeah, so that's stopped, and now it's coming right from Situate.
From the board, any comments?
Motion?
Motion, or comments?
Obviously, great work, you know, and long overdue, and it's great to see the committee really making effective changes so quickly, so it's great stuff. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept on behalf of the Town of Situate a check for $1,000 for the Veterans Advisory Council from the Military Friends Foundation, and further the board thank the foundation for this most generous gift.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Go. Seventeen is the animal, the annual appointment process.
Want me to announce the vacancies?
Yeah, would you have them there?
Sure, yep. So, these are vacancies on committees, and Kim, what are we looking for people to fill out applications and get it to you by?
I think there's a date there.
Oh, right, prior to June 13th. Just read it. So, the vacancies on the committees, commission boards, and councils. So, the Animal Control Board has a vacancy. The Beautification Commission has at least a vacancy. The Public Building Commission has vacancies. The CP, Community Preservation Act Committee has vacancies. I think there's two at-large positions every year. The Historical Commission, the Cable Television Committee, and the Waterways Commission. We will be updating the list of vacancies daily on the town website. We would like to encourage people to check the list and to apply via email or in person prior to June 13th to the Selectmen's Office or in care of Kim K. Donovan. That's K.D.O.V.A.N. at town.situate.ma.us.
I think there might be one on Water Resources as well. Just double-check that.
And there's an opening on Planning Board as an alternate.
Right, and I think there's an opening on the Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee is actually done by the moderator.
Right, the moderator, but if someone's interested, they can, yeah.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yes.
We have received a letter from Bill Lombard, the chairman of the Planning Board, announcing the vacancy on the Planning Board and suggesting that the Planning Board interview the candidates and come back to us for a joint vote. Before I reply to Bill, is there anybody on this committee who would like to ask me to, ask Bill to serve in that screening committee, if I can put it that way?
Before we go, there was some discussion about whether that's the way the process should actually work, or whether we should actually interview the people ourselves. I don't know what the thought of the board is on that. Tricia, do you have any thoughts on?
It's either, either way, the board wants to do it, it's fine. Both are acceptable. It's just, as I shared with the board in my experience, it's usually done jointly, and the candidates are vetted together at the same time rather than one recommending another. But, I mean, the way you've done it, or Bill's suggesting, is not prohibitive. It's just, you know, different. But maybe traditionally how you've done it-
Whatever the board's pleasure is, it can be requested.
I have no, I mean, if the Planning Board wants that this is going to be a member on their board as an alternate, not an actual voting member, but as an alternate who'll be going to the meetings, and they're going to interview a host of people, then they're coming back with one, or are they going to give us one or two people to take a look at?
I believe in the past they've come back with one recommendation, but I can't, I believe they've just come back with their recommendation and would jointly voted it.
Or a couple finalists.
I questioned, I'm not a thousand percent sure on that.
Yeah, I thought they came with like one or a few finalists is what I thought they had done before.
We could ask them, I don't know, we could ask them.
I mean, my point is this, I don't mind interviewing them and setting up a meeting to do it, but if they're going to go through that process and they're going to give us two or three finalists for us to kind of jointly look at it, I'm content with that. I'm content with their ability to interview and go through that process. That would be my position on it.
Could we ask if the board's looking- Could we ask, if the board's okay, would we ask the Planning Board to Mr. Lambaka to give us a list of more than one candidate, to give us a list of two or three?
I think it would be great if we, at our joint meeting, were able to discuss more than one candidate, certainly. So, you know, on the other hand, if the applicant pool is such that there's really one clear. Candidate that seems head and shoulders, then that's one. But I still would like to have a couple that we've, you know, talked about for sure. And I also would like to see a list of everybody who expressed interest. I want to, I'd like to see that.
Would you like to see a list of everyone that applied, and if, in their judgment, more than one qualified candidate, they submitted?
Yeah, so we can discuss as a joint committee, as a joint discussion.
Well, I think what they're asking us now is to select someone from us to go be involved in the process.
No, they're not. I'm asking, I'm asking if anyone would, if any one of us would like to do that. Their letter really, as I read it, said that they were gonna do the process themselves and come back to us with their candidate.
So Tricia, is that the proper way to do it, I guess is my question? That the Planning Board?
Again, I was only sharing what my prior experience is, because it's an elected board, and they're filled jointly. So the way, if that's what you've done in the past, that's acceptable. My experience has been, as you said, that people put their names in, they're jointly interviewed by both committees, and then nominations are put in place. The alternative is to have two or three people come to you. Let them, say if 10 people apply, they, you know, they pre-screen and recruit and recommend those three or two, and then you would come together and interview those folks.
My thought is, there's only gonna be two or three. I don't think we're gonna get a mad rush for, right, but.
Well, how about this?
I'm fine.
How about suggesting, maybe we, somebody either gets in touch with Bill, the liaison for it, which I guess would be me, and put it one of two options. If it turns out that they have a number of people who are applying for the position, that they vet it out, kind of pre-screen it. If it turns out that there are only two or three people, then why not have a joint meeting? And then we'll interview the people, and then have a discussion, and then a vote for it.
I like that.
Okay, now, the letter, I received the letter.
I'm sorry, then, Joe.
No, but I don't mind, you know, if you want to do it, that'd be my guess. I want you to speak to them and see.
Okay.
If it's more than three, then why don't they vet it down to?
You got it. To three, two or three, and then from there.
Right.
Done?
Makes sense.
Done, done, good. Good, good, good. Other business, Board of Selectmen, Rick Murray. First of all, welcome back, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you very, thank you, welcome back. I much appreciate it to be here, and I'd like to thank everybody who, for all the elections, actually, since this is my first meeting back after my work trip. I'd like to thank everybody who ran, and everybody threw their hat in the rings for all the contested elections out there, not just the Selectmen. And I have no other business other than that.
Danny?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that it was in the newspaper, I'm glad to see the sign was found. Welcome to Situate Harbor. But I have to say frankly, you know, it's great. I mean, it's a shame to see these things taken and destroyed. In this case, you know, it looks like it was a prank, they held on to it, it wasn't destroyed, and they were able to put it back. And I thank the town DPW and police for doing their jobs, and going out and beyond their jobs to putting it up and fixing it, so that was nice. Also, I was gonna say, the Chamber of Commerce raised $500 last week at a golf outing for SANS, and that's the, I think it's Strategic Alliance for Natural Disasters, and, which is a town organization that deals with natural disasters from the moment the storm hits to the very end. And it's a great organization. It needs funding, and that's what they're doing, and the Chamber did it at least a little bit to try to make money go their way for 500. Outside of that, I'll leave the sports update to Tony, and that's it.
Well, that's a great transition.
Here's you, to sports. Over to sports.
Just two quick sporting events. Situate Lacrosse and Situate Tennis Team both won their first round playoff. Situate Lacrosse is playing right now in Wellesley. So they are in the second round of the Division II playoffs, so good luck to them. On another note, Joe, I don't know if you were gonna touch on it, but I don't think we've met since Memorial Day. That was a wonderful event. Good turnout, the parade's always fun, watching the kids march, and the band, and all the veterans involved there. The speeches were very poignant and very, you know, very touching, and I think, you know, Mr. Kelly's here, you were a big part of the festivities. The Brigadier General was there, and he gave a great speech, Joe as well. And it was just a wonderful day, and it really shows, you know, the commitment of the town to such an important holiday, and it was a beautiful day, a good turnout, and I was really proud of the town for the event. So thank you to Don Knapp for putting it together, and the groundspeople for making it look so pretty, and all the participants.
I have one.
You have one.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the Situate High School graduation is this weekend, and Mr. Zach is a senior, and has been dutifully covering our cable meetings for the past several years, and it's off to Harvard, I believe, right, Zach? So I just want to thank you on behalf of the town, we're gonna miss you. We hope you stay through the summer, maybe, to cover our meetings, but congratulations to you and all the high school graduates on Friday.
Can we get your picture, Zach, so people can see it? Did you zoom in on yourself there?
Zoom in on yourself.
Just give yourself more recognition.
Get the Harvard jersey out there.
It might, it might be.
Good job.
It might be easier to list the awards that Zach didn't win this year. It seemed like every time we turned around, Zach was being given another award, and very justifiably so. Zach, congratulations, you're a credit to the Situate school system, and you're a credit to the town of Situate, so thank you.
Thanks.
We'll see you Friday.
I have a couple of things, if you don't mind. There's going to be a DPW meeting on rules and regulations for sewer tie-ins, and we've discussed this over the past years, I guess, and that meeting's gonna be held July 10th. And until then, and while these, these new rules and regs will be in the DPW department and in the sewer division, for anyone who would like to, to look at them, any citizen who would like to look at them and review them, before the meeting, which will be held on July 10th. I think I'm asking the board, my suggestion would be that we don't entertain, or the town does not entertain, any more sewer tie-ins. Emergency, you know, until July 10th, until these regulations are implemented in mid-public. So, anyone have a problem with that?
I think that sounds great. Now, when you say regulations, are you really talking about our policies?
No, we're talking about, I think, the tie-in fees, the sewer tie-in fees, and I haven't seen the regulations, I know they're in Al's office, but.
Yeah, and so then they, after that meeting, they would come before us?
Yeah, you have to.
As they always would, yeah, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
Or ask to approve them.
So I just, just since I'm.
I mean, there may very well not be anyone requesting a sewer tie-in in the next three weeks either, I don't know if I just said, rather than have an onslaught of sewer tie-ins or requests for tie-ins to the town.
We have a Selectmen's meeting on July 10th, but you're not talking about.
No, I'm talking about.
Selectmen's meeting, you're talking about a separate DPW.
Separate DPW meeting, as I understand it, Tricia.
Perfect. And I think it's great not to entertain anything until then, because we need to get our arms around that, so that's great.
The other thing that I'd like to mention, there's a transportation summit at South Station. Mayor Manino has called it, it's a summit of, I think mainly Greater Boston and South Shore communities, to talk about transportation issues, which are so important, not only to Boston, but certainly to Situate. And our own Ann Burbine has volunteered to go to that meeting. When is it, Ann?
Monday, the 10th.
Monday, the 10th of?
Of June.
June.
At 2:00 PM.
Thank you.
At the conference, and I'm taking the 12 o'clock, if anybody would like to join me.
Well, I'm sure that that's, that's been publicized now on television, anyone who would like to join you at the summit, you're welcome. All right, thank you very much, and if.
My pleasure.
Come back to us with any heartbreaking stories, we appreciate it. Sewer tie-ins, I think that's it, Zach, we, go ahead.
About the other meeting on the.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do you want to mention the meeting on the 18th?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on that. So this transportation summit, Ann, will, will you be able to discuss things like the termination of train service on the weekends, and the cutback on all that sort of stuff? And, because this board has expressed our strong displeasure with all those MBTA cutbacks and so on.
As has the South Shore Coalition.
Yeah.
I intend to, as you know, I am no shrinking violet, that I will have things to say, and will bring up the fact that we are very concerned about what is happening on the South Shore, and as a case in point, if they, they haven't quite figured out what they're gonna do with Howell, but Howell could end up without any public transportation.
Right.
At the rate things are going. So it's, it will be very interesting to see what comes out of all of this, and I will be more than happy to let you all know what transpires.
Yeah, please do, please do.
Just as an aside, and not to get into any discussion on this, yes, we are interested in transportation, we're also interested in weekend transportation. However, having said that, we are only interested in, if the MBTA can put more people on the train. We are not interested, I don't think, in having weekend service returned to Situate, eight trains a day, or sixty, whatever it might be, with four people on it. I mean, that's still taxpayers' money to the town of Situate. The MBTA's money spent is taxpayers' money, and it's spent foolishly on trains with no one in it, then we don't want that. If they could find some way to, to put more people on that train, we welcome it.
Your point is well taken.
Thank you. Next.
On the eight.
On the 18th. Tricia, would you, on the 18th, the meeting on?
Oh.
Thank you, Tony. So here by surprise.
Yes, the board last week sent out a letter to a variety of boards and committees and folks involved in the management and operation of town buildings and services and education to discuss the board's master facilities plan and what the next step should be. And before we start to spend the money that was appropriated at town meeting, the board has discussed at various times since they hit upon this plan last year, what the proposal or consideration for different various town and school building needs would be, and so that meeting will take place with a facilitator at 6:30 on June 18th at the Situate Harbor Community Building.
AK, also known as Pier 44.
Put a nickel in the jar.
Previously known as.
And this is a very important meeting, and I think the board will agree, that we're providing all the stakeholders to this, I mean, everyone that has an interest in it or received interest, or think they might have an interest in, in what happens to the Gate School Building, and I think that, that group consists of about every, every department in town. It would behoove them to come there and to give their input on what they'd like to see in that building, as far as their organization's concerned, because that's a good time to step up and lift up, you know.
And the reason why we're saying it is not just for the stakeholders or the town departments, but also for everybody in the audience, and people who are in the newspapers and on TV land, so that if you're interested, come on down. We're holding it there, because it's a lot bigger than this place, and, you know, this is the start of a major discussion of a strategic plan that, you know, could change and alter everybody's lives for the next 20 to 30 years. So come on down and participate, be a part of it.
And just to be clear, it's not for discussion of the Pier 44 building, it's discussion of all of the other town hall, gate school, all the ancillary buildings, and all the departments, and the structure of the town's buildings moving forward, which Pier 44 may be a part of that at some point in time, but it's not that discussion. It's bigger.
Right, it's sort of like a chess piece of all the moving parts that we have out there, for a variety of reasons and needs, and get some feedback, so you're not moving forward in a vacuum.
And I think it's important to note also that the Board of Selectmen is making the decision down the road, if this all proceeds as we hope it does, as to who will go in there and how that will happen, so it behooves, again, everyone to be there and give as much input as they can, because when we do make that decision, who goes where, it's, we'd like all the information we possibly could get. Thank you. Thank you for looking that up, Tony.
Joe, there's a question from the audience.
There's a question.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, this is the study for, that reflects the, this is the $375,000 feasibility study? This is the beginning of that? One is saying yes, and one is saying no, over here.
Well, we're not spending the money, we're getting a committee of people together to start talking about it before we start spending the money, correct?
This is the beginning of the project.
So that's why he's saying yes, and that's why he's saying no, because I think you're troubled. Okay, okay, so I think probably what you're running into is, the people, people who are interested, a large committee of people from various departments, to get together and start discussing planning. This is what we're gonna do going forward.
I just wanted to make sure I understood this was what that part of.
But it's also, it's not a single $375,000 study. It is, we have, the town, at town meeting graciously approved allocating up to $375,000 collectively for a series of studies. We might be, on the basis of this discussion that we're gonna have, and future discussions, we might realize that we need $22,000 to study public safety location. So we have that $375,000 that we're gonna be able to draw against, because the town meeting already approved that. It's not a single $375,000 feasibility study, it's $375,000 allocated for this entire process. Some of it might be engineering consultants, some of it might be a study of, of what we can do with this little corner gate, some of it might be what we can do with, as I said, public safety or what have you. So it's not a single $375,000 study.
Thank you. Next agenda item is the acceptance.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to not release executive session minutes for the following dates, June 7th, 2011, September 21st, 2011, October 4th, 2011, October 18th, 2011, and January 17th, 2012, as these items are still pending or under town consideration.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chair, former Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Tony, a few weeks ago, we promised you a gift, we gave you the card, would like to follow this up with the gift. I will not repeat the, what was said a couple of weeks ago, but we appreciate everything you did during every difficult year, and something to remember.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, if we could just do the item that we added at the beginning, which is to sign the public documents. And now, move.
Go ahead.
To adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
And move to adjourn and seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Good night, folks.
Good night.